The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice for all.
John Malcolm's here.
And Jennifer Sullivan's also online.
Who else?
Jennifer.
Ann Harley's in the audience. Anybody else that we need to introduce? Agenda?
So, um, I have some, a proposal for audio visual accessories for hybrid meeting.
Okay.
A list of things. I got some help putting some ideas together, so I wanted to talk about that. Maybe under new business.
Okay.
And then I think we have an update on the store foundation, West Paulette Store Foundation as well. But otherwise, that's it. And there is nothing else really noteworthy on the agenda, so we'll see what that means. I don't know if anybody else had anything?
Good. Approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Everybody happy with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Bob and Rich decided that we want to keep them tonight. All in favor of the minutes from the last meeting? John?
Yes.
Jennifer? Uh, Jessica, excuse me.
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
I'm looking at John's picture and I'm seeing Jennifer right there. Perfect. Pre-requested is nothing announcements. All good. Reports?
So Jessica just, uh, gave a copy for that, a copy of Jonas's report for the planning commission meeting, and it also said it was for the select board.
Yeah, he had like a little post-it that said for the select board, but there weren't enough for the select board and the planning commission, so Kristen ran us off a couple copies of mine.
So this is just a list of permits. And that's all. I don't have anything else.
Planning Commission, let me pull up my report. I'm sorry, I did just send it right before we started, so you will have it in your email, and I will also give this report verbally. So the planning commission met last night. We are working right now on simplifying and updating the lists of permitted and conditional uses for the various zones. The reason for these changes is to make it easier for landowners to get permits for uses that fit with the character of the zoning district, and to give the development review board more flexibility in making their decisions. So we're generally trying to move toward having fewer listed uses, but having the listed uses be more broad. There's some very specific ones on there, like kennel and riding club and stuff. So we are planning to kind of roll all these recreation-based uses, like swimming pool and riding club into a broader recreational use category. And then we also are adding an event venue category that can encompass both the current use, which is auction barns, and it can also encompass like wedding barns, because there were some folks who wanted to start up a wedding barn, which makes perfect sense. Lots of people do it, but that didn't appear anywhere in our zoning bylaws. And the sense of the planning commission is that that fits great with our rural area. And so we want to make the one called event venue for spaces that are used or vented out for occasional events. So we worked on those two ones. The other thing that we discussed, which I will need, um, a, some feedback from the rest of the select board on, is there is, um, and I think I mentioned this earlier at some point, but there is a large solar project on Bullfrog Hollow Road that's currently before the Public Utility Commission. And this is the packet of stuff they sent us for it. Yeah, this is pretty big. So the, um, the relevant bit that everyone might want to look at is the map of where it's going to be. It's going to be pretty big. It is like two-thirds of it is in Paulette, and one-third of it is in Wells, and it is off of Bullfrog Hollow Road. So if anybody wants to have a look at where it's going to be, what, um, what we need to think about tonight is Rutland Regional Planning Commission intends to write a letter, like, I guess it's called mild support. Was that it, Harley?
Oh, that was my word for it.
Yeah.
They call it letter one.
Yeah, Harley is our, one of our reps to Rutland Regional Planning Commission. So Rutland Regional Planning Commission wants to write a letter to support it, but they need to know if Paulette, Select Board, and Planning Commission support it. Um, so... It's basically on the old slate piles, pile area. It's like in industrial, so this is not here yet at all. They're just, they're in the process of getting their permit from the Public Utility Commission. So, um, the planning commission does generally support this project because it's in a spot that is going to be well screened. It's in an industrial zone, which is kind of where we would want solar panels to be, not in like prime ag or anything. There were two small concerns that the planning commission had. One was that, um, some members voiced a little concern about the sufficiency of the decommissioning plans, and that info is here. They do have decommissioning plans. And the other thing we were slightly concerned about was that this is pretty much going to use up our entire substation capacity. So that means that folks in our town are not going to be able to put up their own really large, like someone wants on their farm to put up a whole bunch of solar panels, they will not be able to. Because our substation, with, this will put so much energy back onto the grid that there's no space for more energy to come onto the grid. Folks in our town will still be able to do small rooftop arrays, because we heard from Green Mountain Power that they always keep like a little buffer so that folks can make small arrays. But no one, like the one that's up on Laughing Child Farm, they would not be able to put that up. No one will be able to put up larger ones in our town. The planning commission doesn't think that's enough reason to actively oppose this because it's a good spot, and you know, we, we just, we have a small concern about that. But we did kind of poll the whole planning commission, and the planning commission does generally support this project. So we need to get tonight a sense of if the Select Board would also generally support this project, and if so, um, Harley and John, who are our representatives to Rutland Regional Planning Commission, will let them know that, what our thoughts are. So, any questions about this proposed solar project? I don't know how much I could answer, or maybe Harley could, because he was at the meeting where they talked about it.
Well, you know, one, I'm familiar with its area. One good thing about this project is it's not going on land that has any ag value.
Yeah, yeah. That's what we all thought as well.
You can't see it.
It's the kind, you can't see it.
That's going to be low enough in there, so you're not going to see it like the one of Jack's.
Right, that's, that's right down low. That's basically at road level.
Yeah, it's not really going to be visible from any highways. It's not going to cause any glare, so it's a good spot for it.
And it's not going to tie up valuable ag land. I mean, that's...
Nope.
That's all rubbish pile all the way up through.
Yeah, that's just, that's the old pile. They're just going to flatten it out and put the solar panels there.
Who does that land belong to? Does it belong to Taryn or not?
Yeah, yeah. Steve? The front half, that belongs to Sheldon. I think from, from here forward. From here, right, right here, this is the...
That's the building.
That's that building.
Yeah.
Neil, was that, Neil, was that all good too?
Yeah, there's, uh, I don't know, maybe that might be part of it, but I know there's...
Do you think that one of you could summarize for John, like where this is located? Since he can't see the picture?
Hi, John. Uh, do you remember where Jamie Sheldon had his concrete plant?
Yes.
That's right where the concrete plant was. So you go right up?
Okay.
Right up in there. It's basically that whole area.
It goes, wait, it goes up into Wells. It cross, definitely crosses over the Wells line and goes up into there. And like Rich and I were just talking, that's all low. It's much lower than, than the one that Jack Williams put up there that's on top of the rubbish piles.
You'd never see that one. Maybe a little bit from the road, but I doubt it.
You can't really see any, you can't see any of the cement towers or nothing that were up there at the old plant, so...
Right, because it goes up a little bit too much.
It kind of goes up and then plateaus off in that area, so that it...
Yeah, you wouldn't see that from anywhere.
So do we think we're generally in support of them putting this here?
I cannot think of any reason why it wouldn't be an ideal location for it.
Okay.
This, this is an ideal location for a solar plant. The one thing that concerns me, and then it's nothing to do with this, is the fact that it locks us in so that there's no other options, not only solar, but any other kind of, like a digester or something like that couldn't come in the area because, because we're locked in for power. But that's really nothing to do with this project. That's, that's a bigger picture type of fight.
Someone would put in a project at some point, because this is close to the, the, the lines. The, what are they, the level three lines? I forget what they're called.
Three-phase.
Yeah, the three-phase, the, the big power lines. And we have capacity at this point in our substation. So, I mean, down the line at some point, if they want to keep electrifying things, we were talking last night, someone's going to have to upgrade the substation. But that's not the town's business.
Right.
That's the business of Green Mountain Power or some other developer who wants to come in and build another big array somewhere.
And that's why I say that's not anything to do with this project. It just concerns me for future growth.
It does for me as well.
It does restrict us, but there's, this project is a well planned out and a, a good location from everything that I can see about it. It's very close to the, so it makes sense to put it there.
Does, does anyone else have a thought or a comment about this one? This solar project? If not, I'll just, I'll just mark down that we generally, that we generally approve of it as a Select Board. We don't have to take a vote or anything. It's not that kind of thing.
Are you good with that, John?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I will let everyone know. Thank you. That pretty much concludes my report, except that I did want to mention that yesterday was the, um, open house in West Paulette for the planning process there, and that I have to commend Michael Allen for putting together a really good display. He had a bunch of posters. The maps were really well done. Ed Bov came out from Rutland Regional, and he complimented how well it was done. And a bunch of local folks came by. We had a sign-in sheet, and we definitely went on to the second sheet. So people wrote on post-it notes, and they put them on these big panels to show what they thought for ideas for the future. The biggest thing that came up that people, everybody was talking about was the wastewater fees, which is not surprising, but there were a lot of other really good ideas about, about, you know, like community spaces, or like make a little mini park, or, you know, a lot of people had good ideas. So Michael's going to pull this stuff together, and the next step in that is for him to put together a survey with a bunch of different ideas that people had to go out to everybody in West Paulette, even those who couldn't make it to the open house. So we make sure to get everybody's feedback. So there were a lot of people who were like, "Well, what's the plan?" And we're saying, "We don't have a plan. We're making the plan. You, you help us come up with the plan." So it seemed like a number of people were sort of wondering if we had something in mind, and we said, "No, not, not really," you know? I did mention to folks that this sort of came up because of us talking about the town-owned lot that used to be Duchy's. And, I mean, there was a lot of interest in people saying they'd like to see another store, you know, but understanding they might not be able to be a store, so thinking of other ideas as well. So I think it was a good, was a good, a good open house.
Excellent.
I think that pretty much does it for my planning commission report.
So the only thing I could say is, I sent out, for some strange reason, I was looking through some old notes, and I found when State AOT Department of Transportation came and looked at the monument...
I did see that email, yeah.
It's like, wow, this is, this is what I was looking for. I didn't know that it was still in captivity. So I did share it with everybody, and...
Yeah, and they had several different ideas for what could be done in that area.
And that was eight, eight years ago or so probably. But it did, it did bring back some discussion about the fact that the monument really isn't in the best place.
Yeah, and some folks did bring that up also at the meeting. And, I mean, my, my personal thought is that next time that cycle comes up for the pedestrian grant that we got the scoping study for to do this intersection, we should try to get that grant again to do the intersection in West Paulette. Because also folks had things to say about sidewalks. Like some people wanted to repair their slate sidewalks, but they're like, "Will the town, man, jet?" And, you know, so there was, there was talk about sidewalks as well. So I think I would be in favor of us pursuing that same grant to do the West Paulette intersection. Which is not a great intersection either. Not as heavily trafficked as this one, but also not a great intersection.
Okay, great. That's really good. Any other questions? Road foremen, what's going on on the roads these days?
So Perry got the road size mode. That's, they're pretty well finished up. We're gearing up to do the Kelly Hill project. We're moving a bulldozer in tomorrow. The plan is to start on the 11th, but Dale and Perry would like to get the approach to the, right where you turn in on Kelly Hill Road, it's a little bit steep. They want to build it up a little bit, so they're going to work on that. And Rupert's going to be here the 11th, and Keith is looking for an excavator to rent. And Rupert would like to split that with us. They have a little project to do as well. And they're going to want some help from us on their project when we finish this one.
Yep.
I think that's about it.
Um, I can just bring up, I already told Rich about this, but at the open house, a, a West Paulette resident brought up an issue to me with the roads that she had a complaint about, and it was that in New Street, where the drainage just got put in, there was a bunch of erosion that had happened, and there's a big drop-off on the side of the road. She said it's between Rhonda Schlangen and Dave Hosley's house. And that she wished someone would come back and fill that in, so...
See, before the, uh, the drain was put in, the water had just eroded right along the edge there, down by Dave's. It just created a little bit of a low spot there and cut into the, into the dirt, so it just needs to be filled in.
Can we ask the guys to go back there and fill that in at some point? Okay, great.
Oh, and another thing too, in regards to the West Paulette, the Duchy's property. Keith has a plan. We're going to move a machine in there with a thumb, and we're going to knock the deck off from the floor and crush it all up, and, and either take it somewhere and burn it, or take it to a landfill and then fill that foundation in with, with sand out of the pit, just sand that has no value to it.
Perfect. Now, we're, keeps it from...
From somebody falling in, falling through the deck or getting hurt. And then if someday we decide we want to do something with it, we can just dig the sand out.
Dig the sand out, and we're ready to go. Excellent. That's great.
Sounds good.
When you're talking to them, there's a small branch hanging into the northbound lane by John Thrasher's.
Okay.
So it's, it's low enough, so even a car has to dart out around it. So if it could just come out, it's not, not really a big deal. But I was hoping a truck was going to head it, knock it down, but apparently it's stubborn. It was there this morning, and it was still there when I came home, so...
And the only other thing too is that Dolores Lubke has requested to be on the agenda for the next meeting, and she has concerns, like we've been hearing, about the 153, the condition of 153. And I did talk to Keith about it, and I just wanted to put it on everybody's radar so that when she is here at the next meeting, uh, maybe between now and then, we can just, or if you want to speak about it now, just kind of have some idea of direction so that way we're prepared to have that conversation.
From a couple of the emails that I got, she just wants to get it on public record that, you know, at a meeting that we're working forward and showing progress, and that the, the town is aware of it and stuff.
Right.
And, and she wasn't aware that we had already been working hard to secure funding, which we, we figured we have some of the funding secured for that project, so...
It's always good for people to know that something's being worked on.
And most importantly, I think that, you know, everybody needs to know that the state has had somebody down here to look at it as well. And they, you know, they were not concerned that it was going to fall into the hole all at once, and, you know, there is, there is nothing concerning there, so the state has been here to look at it.
Right.
Last week, Dave Hosley spoke to me about the drainage down there, and says that they didn't get an all-out gully washer, but they got a pretty hard rain, and it all worked really well. He was very happy with, uh, with the way it worked down there.
Excellent.
Just fill in that ditch, and that'll be done.
What's that?
Get that ditch filled in down there. It won't even take a one-ton load. Half of one, maybe.
And then we can look at, at future expansion of the road more. It's, it's only going to just keep getting better. So the one thing that did occur to me is that that one Mack truck gets paid off this year, right? Are we still kind of sniffing around?
Yeah, so...
I know trucks are hard to get, but...
They're virtually impossible to get. Uh, Keith has been making some phone calls, and we had just talked about this the other day too. And, I mean, he has, he has nothing to tell us at the moment, other than he's had no luck at all finding a truck. At least not in the near future. It's to the point now where, where you can't even order them.
They won't even accept an order.
Right, they, you could, you know, six months ago, you could order one, and you maybe would get it in 12 to 14 months. And now we're to the point where you don't, they're not even taking orders, so...
That's awesome.
Yeah, we want to make sure we take care of what we've got.
Keep, keep up with the repairs.
And, and I'll continue to follow up with him on that, but that's the, the report.
And our current, our current system, we always, we, we drop the 10-year-old truck down, and it, and generally, we can get five more years out of it. So, you know, as long as we're staying, staying proactive that same way. Usually when we drop it to the third slot, it doesn't get the use that it does in the second slot, but we, I think that, I mean, for, for the most part, the trucks are in pretty good condition. We've had issues with the radiator and stuff like that, but it's not...
Thankfully, we get parts for them, you know, we've been able to do that. And they've needed some welding here or there, and, you know, we can, we've been able to get that done.
But there's no major, major issues, and I mean, for, for the, as far as the running gear or the trucks themselves, we're nowhere near the hours or...
Oh, no.
Or mileage that you would expect for a normal life. Our biggest thing is making sure they stay washed and the frames stay lubricated from the, from the winters.
You know, the challenge with these trucks now too is all the electrical sensors and computers and modules, and those are a battle.
Yep, a lot of connection issues. Okay, so that's still, still going on now? And everything else seems to be holding up all right?
Yeah.
You having any luck finding an excavator or not?
Keith just started looking. If, if he doesn't find one, there is a couple that are available that would do the job.
It won't hold the project?
No, and the bulldozer's, uh, on its way up tomorrow, so...
Perfect. Anybody else have any questions for Town Roads? Okay. Assessors? Nothing from them today? Town Clerk's memo? Deb's joined us tonight?
Deb's here.
Hi, everybody. Um, I, I only have a couple things. The town hall is now an active polling place. Early voting has started effective last Friday. I have sent out, um, probably about 100 ballots thus far. And also, something came up on the listserv with Juneteenth. A lot of the towns have, have taken that on as a federal holiday, so I just thought I would put that on your radar for consideration for an upcoming year. This year, it fell on a Sunday, but, um, many towns have adopted that as a federal holiday, so that's just something for the future for you guys. Other than that, I don't really have anything to add unless anybody has any questions.
Nothing that I can think of. Thank you. Appreciate you coming and giving us that report.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Deb. Have a good night. Town Treasurer.
There are two warrants this week. The payroll for this period was $11,341.78. Accounts payable was $26,493.83. General fund monies, $19,076.11. Highway, $13,734.69. Wastewater, $5,024.81. Wastewater final collection compared to last year's delinquent levy of $21,369.31. So the final 2021, 2022 was $111,00800, 112,860. Adjustment credits, $329.19. Collected by Treasurer was $87,614.50, and the remaining is $24,916.31. We, you want to talk about that first?
That's over three grand. That's up from last year, huh?
Well, I mean, I imagine inflation is pinching folks.
We have received payment on Grant P. 02027 paving grant for $138,566.30 and C.A. 0639 pedestrian scoping study for $20,079.68. Julie will be busy the next few weeks with the closing of the fiscal year and appointments to gather information for the annual audit and preparing tax bills. The motions for this evening are for payroll warrant number 22075 for $11,341.78 and the accounts payable warrant 22076 for $26,493.83. And that was submitted by Julie Mack.
Excellent. Any questions? Can I hear a motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion for these two warrants, 22075 and 22076.
Have a second?
No second, Deb.
All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie? Here's the rest of the warrants, if anybody wants to look at any of the bills. There's not the, the receipts. Emergency Management Director? Nothing. Health officer? Jennifer?
Yes, Jennifer shared that there was a report from Castleton Express Care on 6/23/22 of a dog bite, but she's having trouble reaching the victim for full information and will continue to try to follow up with them.
That's it. Okay. Any questions for Jennifer? Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Waste water treatment, I guess. Everything seems to be going all right. Today we got the pump back. Um, one of the pumps from the Spruce Gum Station that failed, we sent out and had it rebuilt. So we got a spare pump and now it's like 2,200. Just dropped that off today. I got, actually I had them drop it off at work and I'll bring it down. And the only thing she says in the spring that, uh, they have a lot of high flows up there and they're afraid that, that something in the area of the culvert could be leaking. That's what she says, but she doesn't have, she hadn't camered the, see, then able to run the camera.
She thinks it's in the same area of the last break?
That's, that's what she's thinking, but she doesn't know. She's wondering because it's close to the ground and the freeze and the thaw and the ground is really wet there. But she says in order to, no, for sure she'd have to run the camera out there. And they're going to have to do it during the high flow type event so we can see what's going on.
Mike, have we heard anything for some time from that guy who was going to help us with grants?
Nothing.
I should maybe try to contact him again because, you know, just I was, I was reminded yesterday at the open house with people talking about the wastewater fees, you know, that we wanted to try to get something going to help that out. And, you know, someone mentioned to me that, about how we'd done that survey asking what we should do with our, um, ARPA funds. And we had said, you know, we wanted to do something with the wastewater plant. And they were like, but you didn't do anything. I'm like, I know it takes time, but it would be nice to, I'll put, what was his name? John, I think?
I think so.
I can, I can find it. It'll be back in my emails.
Have to search, but.
Yeah. I can contact him again. Cause last thing I heard from him, he had said that it was about talking to the person who had done our, I don't remember the name of the person. Was it Linda or something like that who had done our initial study? The engineering study?
It's not Linda, but yeah. She had, he had to talk and they, they weren't quite to the level that we had thought they were.
Yeah, so we had to get another, some more stuff done. So, yeah. I bet, that, it's, I think that we just sort of like dropped the ball on talking to each other. So I wish we should get, I'll, I can try to get back in touch with him and see where we're at and like what the deadlines are for upcoming grants and things. I was also kind of wondering, um, so every year we put some money into the wastewater fund, right? Is it 15,000? Is that what we normally do? I was wondering if it would be possible to just put a little bit of the ARPA funds into that also. I mean, since we can now basically do what we want with the ARPA funds, if we could just put in enough that there would at least be a little bit of a decrease temporarily in the wastewater fees until we can get a longer, long-term fix. I mean, I think even if it was just a little bit, I, I know that we need to use those funds for like important things going forward. But if there was even just a couple thousand dollars we could put into it and everybody would like get a decrease of 50 bucks on their bill or something, I think it would go a long way towards showing people that we were actually working on it. I don't know. I just wanted to throw that out there as an option. We haven't actually committed very many of the ARPA funds.
Yeah, if we put like 50, what is there, 120 some users or something like that?
Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, what would that be? Like if we put in, let's see, 50 times 100 would be like 5,000. So if we put in like 6,000 or 7,000 or something.
Six thousand dollars or something like that would give it, it would give everybody a $50 bonus.
I mean, per year. I mean, I don't know if they even noticed that in the monthly one.
Right.
I mean, if we did like 10, they could then see a little bit more. Like it would be like $25 off each quarter. And I'm just throwing that out there. I know we're not making those kind of decisions yet.
I understand that, but then, I don't know. To me, that's kind of like fake security.
Yeah, it's like a Band-Aid, I guess.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't do anything for the long term.
Yeah, which is why we also.
It just kind of tricks you into, to looking at a better thing.
I mean, we also got to do the long term. I guess what I'm just thinking is that the grant, any grants we get, we wouldn't, we haven't even written them yet.
Right.
So we wouldn't see anything actually happen with the wastewater plant for at least like probably two years.
Right.
So, again, I mean, we're not deciding on budgets right now. I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. And if, even if we don't do that, I think it would be good to communicate at some point with folks in West Paulette with what we're working on. Just so that people, you know, just like with, uh, with the thing that Dolores is going to bring up, right? It's nice for people to know that it's being worked on. You know, then they know that something's actually being done. That's all.
Good. Anything else for the wastewater? What about facilities? Does anybody have anything to report on any?
Weren't we going to put out a call for the contractor? Has that?
We have, we just got the Front Porch Forum account set up and approved.
Wonderful.
And so that will be coming this week. Do you guys trust me to formulate a post?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So I'll be doing that for Sean. So Sean is, um, Sean is, he's running it, but my email is attached to it. So I'm seeing all the stuff that are, that will come through. Um, so yeah, so that will happen this week. It just, we had to put it in and it had to get approved and all that. So. We are officially on Front Porch Forum now.
Good job, town of Paulette.
Okay, older unfinished business?
Um, we already talked about the store foundation. So that was all I had.
I don't think so. Let's go right into your proposal about.
Okay. So John Weiss, um, helped me out because I'm not super tech savvy. But he, I'm just going to find the email. Okay. So I told him about what we wanted and all the stuff that we had been discussing. And so he went on and created this like little shopping cart for me from B and H. And the idea is that we would get a 50-inch flat screen TV, or it could not be 50 inches, but, and then it would be on a rolling cart. So it would be mounted to the cart. On, and so we could move it wherever we wanted within the building. Um, it doesn't have to be mounted to a wall. And on that cart would be a mount for an iPad, which the iPad could hook up to the owl. So I wouldn't have to use my computer anymore. And so the iPad would just live here with it. The owl would hook up to it. And then there would also be like power cord and everything would just be all right there. And anybody could use it for any meetings. And it seems like it will work out pretty well. And additionally, um, if you're just doing like a one-on-one video conference call or something like that, anybody could utilize the iPad. It could just kind of be, it would all be one package deal. So any, like the DRB and the planning commission, everybody could just use it.
Oh, I wouldn't have to bring my computer in.
Right. So the, so the whole, um, so, I mean, he like really thought of everything. In this shopping cart is the mounts and like little cable wraps and the TV and the surge protector and, I mean, everything. So for the whole deal, it would be just under like $1,500.
No, that's not fair.
Yeah. Um, he also suggested that we start by just getting everything but the iPad because the iPad is the bulk of the cost at $600. Um, and what, we did the research and it should work, but like I have an iPad. So I, we could get the whole setup and then I could bring an iPad down and see if it works. And just make sure that it, you know, is seamless.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Part of it too is like there's this whole, I was asking him because of the USBs and now all the inputs and everything like that are so specific. So he said that there would be this sys, this mounting system that would go onto the stand and it would allow for us to put the HDMI or the USB or whatever it is into the iPad. It would all work. And he said that he would then also help to come down and like set it up.
Well, that's very nice of him.
Which is super nice.
Yeah, very helpful.
Would the owl perch on top of the TV still?
Owl would, yeah. So he said in theory, the owl, everything would live on this little cart.
On the cart?
So it would basically be, and it's not unlike what Frank recommended a couple of weeks ago. Um, but it's a little bit more streamlined. And so it would be like our whole audio visual cart. And theoretically then that could almost also be wheeled onto the elevator if we were ever to do anything upstairs. It would be relatively portable.
Very mobile.
Yeah. So, which is nice. And then, you know, depending on how it all goes. So, yeah, so it seems pretty good for 1,500 bucks.
Bob just made a motion that we
That we do that?
Ask him to buy that, please.
Woo, that's exciting. All right.
The iPad is really simple and therefore casual user coming in can get going really quickly. But the iPad has one connector.
Right.
Um, and a laptop will cost you less than the iPad, but doesn't have that simplicity, but it had more connections.
Yeah. So I think.
And so that's just the only comment I want to make.
No, well, so I had the same feedback. I said to John, I was like, well, I don't know how that's going to work. And he said that there's this adapter thing that he's included in this whole bundle that would be able to plug into the iPad and then there would be several, like a little octopus situation. So.
If there is, if there is that, then.
Yeah, so that you could have different things going.
Manifold.
To power the iPad as well as
Yes.
Um, have the iPad feed the video. Then that I withdraw the comment.
No, yeah. But I, so I don't know though, do you think that it would be a good idea to hold off on the iPad at first and buy everything else and just we can, I, I'd be happy to test with an iPad and make sure it works.
I think just buy it. It sounds good enough to be true.
Right? It sounds pretty good. I know. And we could use ARPA funds for it.
That is significantly less than I was expecting it to cost with that, with such a big TV.
It's way cheap enough. I, and then, and then we buy it and then we try it. And then we monkey around. I got to order the iPad later.
And if we don't, if honestly, if the iPad doesn't work out.
It'll take 18 months to come in.
Yeah, right?
You'd be lucky.
Hopefully not. Yeah. I mean, the TV's 400 bucks and the iPad is $600. And then everything else, like, you know, everything else is, the stand is 150.
Then we'd only need four more iPads if that one doesn't work.
Right. Yeah. If the iPad doesn't work, that's our first step in getting the whole slate.
Get, get all the rest of it and then we don't have to have this anymore.
A dream realized.
Cool, huh?
Um.
Bet you never thought you'd hear me say that.
Okay. So, wow, well, that was easy. I was expecting.
We still have to vote, I think.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. That was good.
Bob moved and I seconded.
All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie? Thank John Weiss very much for
I will.
working on this for us.
Yeah, I was talking to him about it the other night and I was like, if you're bored and like, you know, want to just cruise around on the internet. And the next day he's like, well, I mean, I was bored, so here you go. And he sent me this whole email and it was awesome. So, um, I super appreciated that. Okay, cool.
Yeah, I only found out like last year that he does animation and things.
Yeah, he's super talented.
He knows a lot about, about the technology.
Oh, yeah. He's like completely my go-to guy for everything technology. I'm very lucky to have that. Um, okay.
I'm so happy. Sleep always beats cruising on the internet. Every time.
Wait, sleep?
Sleep, yep. Every time. Trump's, it trump surfing the nap.
It really does.
I'm so excited about that. I guess that's just a sign of my age. So.
Okay. Um, Jennifer Sullivan.
Any other new business?
Jennifer Sullivan messaged and said that as a citizen of West Paulette, I vote yes for Jessica's idea for wastewater treatment plant money.
And we're good at new business, probably?
Um, I think so.
Is there a public comment? Nothing from Harley. Frank, what do you got to say?
Oh, he's gone.
Oh.
I'm assuming that FN was Frank Nelson?
I thought so too, but you never know. Could be someone else.
He went to bed. He values his sleep also. I don't know.
Maybe he got his daily dose of public last night.
Oh.
He was at the entire open house as well. So.
Cool. Good deal.
Whole thing. Yep.
All right. So I guess we know what next.
All right. I'll move that we adjourn.
All right. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Bob second it? All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.